All right, it is two o'clock and I will open this special Grand County Commission workshop on land use code updates. It's July eighteenth, present our commissioners Kevin Walker, Evan Clapper, Bill Winfield, Trish Hadeen, Mike McCurdy, Mary McGann and myself, Josh Hadler. We also have Clerk Gabriel Whittek, County Administrator Mallory Nassau and Associate Administrator Quinn Hall. The workshop will be presented by Elisa Martin, our Planning and Zoning Director, who will be here shortly.
Uh, I guess.
So I believe this is, this is, they wanted to do this Mallory to, yeah, give us an update on everything that's been going on with planning and zoning as well as prepare us for a a couple of things coming up over the next few commission meetings.
I mean, not particularly, but.
They're brain. Nonstop, sorry, but it hasn't been county stuff. Family stuff. Off the grid.
Where did you go?
Well, I went, we went up.
Yeah.
So nice, so cool.
Still bad at my house, I'm still going to be gone.
Our house, my house.
I just saw you. Not who we needed.
We have other folks coming in for the special events portion.
Uh, yeah, we have Kate, the special events. Program manager will be.
And would she be able to come in early if this part ends early?
Like, does it begin?
So while we're waiting, here's a very low importance topic, but I think this room hasn't really been spruced up or rearranged for probably twenty years. I think there's some pretty ancient stuff on the shelves. Lots of paraphernalia here that we'll be using. So I would propose that maybe some subcommittee of us could work with staff to kind of clear out the crud, maybe add some.
I would totally, I don't know if you know this about me, but I am slightly OCD. I love organizing, throwing stuff out. I'm like a pro editor. I am down.
Yeah.
And actually, I've been kind of like hoping something great is coming down.
Oh, it would be nice.
A formal council, they were very adamant, we have a hat. So we got that, that was.
And the only one that uses it is me with my coat and my winter.
I'm down.
I think it's a great idea. I thought the same thing, Kevin. Okay, well, I'm willing to, I've got some opinions about stuff that could go, so.
I can just be the labor, you can plan, you can, you know, you just.
Definitely stuff that could go, how about, how about stuff that could, could you add?
It'd be nice to get some artwork, see if we wanted, like, they do it.
Rotating community.
Yeah, see if there's some, well, bring one of yours.
That would be conflict of interest.
Me, thanks, so you wouldn't have to. Don't need a price tag on it. Uh, off, you know, don't put a price tag on it, don't sell it.
Yeah, yeah.
Lots of people in town.
Yeah.
I think it would be nice to have a commissioner's art on. Just saying. Kevin's artwork is excellent.
And we'll use tables. Or some.
Yeah.
Probably get a John.
Who's that?
John.
Couple extra chairs back here.
Yeah, he gave everybody these.
Got it.
This TV blocks people sometimes.
Hmm, yeah.
Yeah.
Those are the worst chairs, too. When I was running, I came to all the meetings. Bill, you said them a lot, too. They are uncomfortable. I just thought they were the worst.
I was gonna say, that's my, my intent.
It was even mentioned in, it was even mentioned in editorial when one of the staff at the Times Independent left to join the Peace Corps, I think is where he went. He said, he was, wrote an article about observing the commission meetings. He said, I sit in those uncomfortable chairs for up to five hours. What?
I'm sorry, what? All right, I will, we are going to call a ten minute recess while we figure out our situation. Uh.
Twenty.
Two, yeah, two twenty.
Two, yeah, two twenty.
Okay, we good? No, we never stop, okay.
All right, I will reconvene this workshop. We're actually gonna change courses here and switch from our uh, land use code update workshop to our three to three thirty scheduled special events first quarter twenty twenty four intend to apply review. And uh, thank you Kate Finley, who is our new special events program manager, if you guys haven't met Kate yet. And and thanks for changing your afternoon around, Kate, to accommodate us. So I will turn it over to you and Mallory to uh, get the workshop going.
Great. So background on this workshop. The ITAs that you're about to hear, we received for quarter one of twenty twenty four. So beginning of January through the end of March. And the special events advisory committee deemed those as high impact. So per the ordinance, because they were deemed high impact, the commission reviews those on a quarterly basis. Per the updated ordinance, applicants can also request that the commission review their ITA early. And there are two ITAs that the commission can choose to either approve now or postpone until later, a later review. And those are going to be the ITAs for the April and June events. So I can just start running through these. And then if you all have questions, feel free to stop me.
Great, yeah, that'd be great.
So the January submission is for the Arches Ultra sponsored by Mad Moose. This is a running event. The dates are January twenty sixth and twenty seventh. Total daily attendance is estimated at six hundred, taking place on private property and public lands. Started in twenty eighteen, Arches Ultra is a fifty mile, fifty K, half marathon and nine K trail running event. Hosted at Gemini Bridges and Barum Trails in Moab. Starting and finishing at seven mile RV campground, runners will traverse over Barum, Lonzo and Klondike Trails. On a course that has been reviewed and approved by the BLM and CIVL.
So in the process now, do we know what other lower impact events are also happening?
Sure, those are on the calendar.
Okay.
So the calendar that you've got is January through June, because I included those out of cycle ITAs. And it has low impact ITAs on this one.
Yeah.
Okay, so nothing in January.
Looks like that's the only event period in January, right?
The February submission is for Moab's Red Hot Ultra, also sponsored by Mad Moose, also a running event. Taking place on the twenty third and twenty fourth. Total daily attendance there is estimated at five hundred. Taking place on private property again and public lands. Started in two thousand and seven, Moab's Red Hot is a fifty mile, fifty K, thirty K, starting and finishing at Gemini Bridges area. Specifically the seven mile RV park. It'll travel up Gemini Bridges Road and use Goldfire, Rusty Nail and Poison Spider. Then we've got a few more events in March. So the first one is Moab Run the Rocks sponsored by Trans Rockies. Another running event taking place on March eighth through the tenth. Total daily attendance is six hundred. Taking place on public lands. This is a three day running event to take place in early March. This is the second year of operation. They're offering two distances each day of the event, taking place at three different stops around Moab, including Navajo Rocks, Mag Seven and the Far End Trail Networks. Next up in March is the Skinny Tire Festival sponsored by Skinny Tire Events. This is a road cycling event. Taking place on the ninth through the twelfth. Total daily attendance there is six hundred. Taking place on public roadways and private property. This is a road cycling tour located in Moab and area roadways. We're in road cyclists tour the scenic highways of our area. Every cyclist donates to Moab Healthcare Foundation, which benefits Grand County residents moving through and beyond the cancer situation. Cyclists begin wherever they're lodging, about one fifth of them begin at Archway. And they ride the Moab bike path, Highway three thirteen, Dead Horse Point State Park, Highway one twenty eight, Arches National Park and Highway two seventy nine.
So with uh, the running event using Navajo Rocks and Mag Seven and Skinny Tire riding up three thirteen at Dead Horse, is there conflict there?
My understanding is that the running event is confined mostly to the trails.
But I mean, the six hundred people moving up and down three thirteen.
You can look into it.
I think uh, I'm not sure, but these are returning events.
Did they happen on the same weekend last year?
It definitely happened on the same weekend at least two or three years ago, because I participated in the Skinny Tire and I remember riding my bike up that and it was, it was kind of business as usual on that road from my recollection, but I'm not, I'm not sure. Last year I didn't do the event.
And the calendar, this is from twenty twenty three events that should show the weekends that they were. I can't see. There was an overlap.
Was it Run the Rock? They were different weekends last year. Run the Rocks is the third.
But Skinny Tire, they stage.
They, they, they do, they, they stage it, they go up, one day they go up to Dead Horse. So they'll just be on that three thirteen one day and then other days they go.
Right.
Into Arches.
But they're coming, staging out of town or at a bar?
They, no, they, they stage it, they leave from, um, like Kate said, from the Archway Inn usually, that's, that's where they have the main thing and people usually just leave from there. Okay. And then go, so yeah. So they go up the, the route goes up the bike path and then when you hit three thirteen, then it goes up three thirteen.
So would it be sufficient then just to notify the organizers that, you know, there's a potential for traffic jams and ask them to work it out and?
And definitely, it also would depend on, on which days they're out there, how that would play out, because like I said, the Skinny Tire would only go up three thirteen one day. And if that doesn't conflict with the days that, that they're out there, it's, I, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah. I don't. I don't remember that Trans Rockies run from last year, but but they're in good standing. Okay.
They, they also do, they, they put on a lot of events around the West. They put on the uh, the um, the bike ride, the uh, Love Rocks.
Right, okay.
Bike race every year and they do, they do events in Colorado and then up in Canada too. I think the outfits out of Canada, they actually also bought the Grand Fondo from Poison Spider a couple of years ago. So they put that one on as well. So they, they have a pretty big presence of special events in the county.
So then, after Skinny Tire, we've got Canyonlands Half Marathon sponsored by Mad Moose again. This is a running event on the fifteenth and sixteenth. Total daily attendance for this one is fifteen hundred people, taking place on public lands and public streets. For almost fifty years Canyonlands Half Marathon and Five Mile have been held in Moab. Runners from all over the world come to celebrate spring in the desert. The event will start and finish in Lions Park. The course goes along Highway one twenty eight. Then Easter Jeep Safari sponsored by Red Rock Four Wheelers is a motorized event. Taking place between March twenty third and thirty first. Total daily attendance is estimated at seven hundred and fifty with seven hundred vehicles. Located at Osta and on public lands. This is an annual spring event with a fifty seven year history of being held in Moab. Associated with the Easter date. Brings to Moab a large group of Jeep owners to enjoy guided trail rides in surrounding areas of great camp.
Should definitely cancel that.
Joking.
And then our last event for March is the Behind the Rocks Ultra sponsored by Mad Moose. A running event on the twenty third. Total daily attendance is three hundred and fifty, taking place on public lands. Behind the Rocks Ultra is a fifty mile, fifty K, thirty K and fifteen K hosted at Behind the Rocks Trail. Runners come from all over the country to celebrate spring at this event. They will travel through Hunter Canyon, Amasa, Jacksons and King Creek.
And that's the same weekend as Jeep Safari?
They start on the same day. So Behind the Rocks, it's like it's a one day that starting on the same day that Jeep Safari does.
The twenty third, Saturday, the twenty third, right?
And, and the summary doesn't mention it, but this, this race has been run for, I think, at least ten years maybe or? It's not a new one.
Yeah.
I feel like I've kind of run into them out in the Amasa area. You know, they're just kind of trickling. Never seems to bog down.
No, I, I don't think it's the runners, but they do, the, the finish line is right there at the end of the pavement.
Is it right where Jackson Trail pops out?
Yeah, yeah. Great. Uh, do we know if they've overlapped the Jeep Safari before?
I don't know, but um, one thing you guys could consider is uh, making sure that for approval EMS, um, and any, any other emergency services sign off and are comfortable with that overlay.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
And the first day Jeep Safari is a busy day. You know, she's made that.
Later in the week, things will.
Pick up, yeah, that first day is a lot smaller than Jeep Safari. The next weekend is when it gets bigger.
Yeah. It's early this.
So I, yeah, yeah, it's early.
It looks like they, if the Mad Moose, Amasa Back was the same event. They overlapped the finishing weekend this year, so. A little feedback from the services about if that was an issue or. I just want everybody to be successful in their days.
I think uh, post event evaluation.
There were, I looked at it before coming here, so there wasn't really any feedback from services about events with conflicting dates. For really any of the events that were.
Great.
Um, last two submissions, and these are the two that are out of cycle that the commission can decide to either sit on now or postpone to a later date. The April submission is for the Amasa Trail Race sponsored by Mad Moose, a running event on April twentieth. Daily attendance two hundred and sixty five, located on public lands. Started in twenty ten, Amasa Trail Race hosts twenty five K and fifteen K distances at the Amasa Back Trail Network. Starts and finishes at King Creek Recreation Parking Lot and uses Amasa, Jacksons and Rock Stocker Trails. And then the June submission is for the Crystal Festival Rock Mineral Gem and Crystal Show. Sponsored by Crystal Festival LSC. This is running June fifteenth and sixteenth. Total daily attendance is estimated at fifteen hundred and the proposed location is Osta. Crystal Festival is a celebration of the love of crystals and a happy place to enjoy everything rock related. Crystal Festivals features vendors from around the Western United States with a wide variety of stones to choose from. Can buy your favorite pieces or learn how they are mined and used from local mine owners, lapidary artists, jewelry artists.
I'm gonna see one of you try to deny the Crystal Festival. People are real happy. I'm extremely happy.
Yeah, it was very.
My only question with that is, if it's being held at Osta?
Yeah, that's where the.
Well, where else does ours?
Do you know that?
Can the county not sponsoring it?
Oh, the county not, yeah, it's not.
Anyway, it's, I'm excited it's back.
It's good, good times a lot, I think, too.
Yeah.
It's nice.
The county can sponsor.
So summarize, so that, the one, the last one you mentioned, that's the only new, new event?
Yeah, all the others are recurring.
Though one of them is only in their second year. Which, which one was in the second year?
Trans Rocky.
Oh, that's right, yeah, got it, Run the Rocks, yeah.
You're not gonna start scrutinizing the crystal. Anything for the love of crystal.
No, I mean, if you wanted to, I could argue that they should wait until the next review before we approve them. Wasn't gonna do that either. No, I like, I went, I went to some of the past rock shows, it's kind of fun.
So this, this is an event that had happened in the past, it's just been absent for a few.
Well, the, just the rock.
There was some kind of rock show, yeah.
Yeah.
I remember rock shows.
Uh, I do remember that, yeah, absolutely, but it's, this is the, this is the same.
I, I, I don't know if it's the same.
Got it.
So this is the Crystal Fest.
Yes.
To eat better.
So, um, yeah, it, look, looking at the criteria, criteria we brought up in past reviews. You know, sometimes we worry about just too much happening in any single month. I don't think that's an issue for these, though. We are preapproving it in one or two events that are in busy months, so you know, those months will fill up. Um, I think especially for new events, we gotta look for variety, because we've already got lots of, as we can see, lots of ultra marathon events. We've got lots of motorized events, lots of biking events. Um, but these, these are recurring ones, so, um. I don't know, so, so all of these, you know, to me seem like, you know, I'm getting kind of go a lot, you know, none of them raise the usual flags.
Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with all these. I mean, January and February, there's the only events in the whole month. March still is relatively thin compared to some of the latter months. The time slot for the Crystal Festival is mid to late June. That seems like a pretty innocuous time to hold something, a great time to hold something, actually, it brings some business into town in a slow time period.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I would, yeah.
Um, I would just kind of say it might be worth mentioning to the organizers for those two weekends where um, there's some doubled up events and I don't know if they're aware.
Right.
Maybe they decide that, you know, they don't want to be out there when they're sharing the highway or whatever.
Or just competing for rooms.
Yeah.
So that's the Skinny Tire Run the Rocks Weekend and then
Yeah. I don't, you know, I'm fine with them happening, I think, but I think it'd be worth them maybe double checking with some of the.
Yeah.
EMS.
And also I think making, you know, figuring out some way to monitor just to, you know, whether it, it you know, people are staging in roughly the same places, maybe some good visit and see whether that's an issue or not.
And maybe in the post event evaluations for those, it could just be asked um, for referral agencies, emergency services, if there were any issues, no going forward.
And then on the calendar, the same weekend as the Masa Trail, there's a Green River Dirt Bike Rally. Do you know what areas they're planning on, is it?
Yeah, so that event was approved last year as well. It's a recurring event. Most of it takes place in Emery County. And they have one or two groups that go out to whitewash, so that's kind of a piece of it, that's a great count.
Right, so they don't, they don't even get here to Moab, really, right? Yeah, I remember that. So, yeah, I'm, this seems like the least controversial uh, ITA quarter that we've ever had come before us.
I know, Kate, you got away pretty. Geez.
So, yeah, I.
Expect this in the future.
I don't know, I, I think the system might be, you know, falling in place, it's like.
Yeah.
It's nice to be able to look at them all at once.
It's so much easier than waiting before, like.
Yeah.
Oh, because they've already put so much work into it, it's hard to scrutinize.
Yeah, yeah, it's, yeah.
And I mean, to Kevin's point, is it worth if somebody's looking for early approvals for them to kind of have a reason that they're looking for that? Because I don't want to turn into a thing where we're approving things eight months in advance and then somebody else meets the deadline and it's like, oh, we already told the crystal guys they could be there, so we really want you know, the commission appreciation party to happen.
Yeah, no, I, I, I think that's a good point and.
Nope, sarcasm.
Yes. But I, but I think that these two events, you know, one of them is an event that has been run for, you know, quite a few years and I, I think we hardly ever you know, so that, if April becomes crowded, I don't think the Amasa Back race is going to be the first thing to go. And then this Crystal Show, as evidenced by the conversation, you know, just seems to be really popular. And so I, I think if it were just some humdrum event that wanted to be approved early, I might ask them to wait, but I think this one, you know, offers some variety and think, you know. It's not like other events we have, so that makes me feel. Okay, but, but I, I definitely agree with you that we shouldn't just go approving things early willy nilly. I, I think it should be reserved for events that seem especially desirable or are really well established, like, you know, the Jeep Safari, for example, right? It, to my recollection, this is the first time someone that we've had early approval on the ITA.
Yeah, because we, when we revised the rules, we clarified that that was allowed. I, I think the intention was that from, from the beginning was it, it's allowed, but now.
Yeah. All right. All right, um, anyone else have anything to add or, or otherwise that we will visit this during our regular agenda as an action item? Where we will uh, give the thumbs up to these events for the first quarter twenty twenty four.
You did a great job.
Yeah, thanks, Kate. All right, then, um, I will, so we're, we're looking at the next workshop at three, okay? All right, then I will close this workshop and we'll reconvene at three for our um, land use update workshop at from three to four. Thanks.